Okay, it's six forty-five. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at this time. Are there any suspensions this evening there? Yes.
I guess, Madam President, we are requesting suspension on one item. It is Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen. The City of Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department is, would like to apply for a grant from the Seneca County Park District. And by doing so, they need a resolution that you all support them applying for the grant. It would be utilized for the all-inclusive playground. And that, if we obtain the grant, it would allow us to enclose the entire playground in, in, in some very nice powder-coated black fencing. By doing so, it's very good for kids who may have either sensory issues or maybe autistic, or just children in general that are prone to running, but some of those issues like autism and other things, one of the, the side effects can be at times that they, they will take off running. And it could be quite difficult for a parent who may have a couple of kids there to try to keep track of everything. So this would allow the entire playground to be fenced in, in a very nice attractive fencing manner versus just your plain chain link fence. So they would like to have this done. However, they need it by the end of the month to apply for the grant. So we would really like counsel to consider suspending and passing that under emergency this evening, just so that we can get that grant submitted.
Thank you. Who, who signed that? Thank you, Sue. Okay. Any questions on that? You're good.
And then the only other thing, Madam President, is just a reminder that Order, or Resolution twenty-two fourteen is just a one reading.
One reading. Yep, yep. Thank you. And Danny, that was you, I imagine. Hey, Ben. Any other suspensions this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, oh, yes, Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Madam President. Would you mind telling me what has been asked to be suspended?
Yes, Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen is asking to be suspended due to the Parks and Rec team applying for a grant for the park dis, from the park district, and they need that. It's asking to be suspended because they need to apply for it by the end of the month.
A very time sensitive.
Yeah.
Did, did I sign that?
No, Councilman Leopard.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, okay, so I think, I think the other thing that we want to talk while we have some time is about what we want to do for next meeting. And obviously, we can formally vote on, we will formally vote on this during the regular Tiffin City Council meeting. But Dawn, I know you had raised just an update of where your, your status of things are as far as you being able to attend in person or not. And again, while we had some time, would love to get everyone's thoughts and feedback about what we want to do for next meeting. The mayor has noted that I think May sixteenth, we're really trying to be be in person for that meeting. But again, really just wanted to open this up to the group, given where we're at with the status of some of our council members. Does anyone have any thoughts? That's Councilman Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It's always my preference to, to meet in person. But I obviously get, you know, the other council members have, you know, circumstances going on outside of their control. And I think the the real importance is to have more people here than to meet in person at this current moment. But going forward, I'd love to get a path where we can get back in, in person every, you know, to our normal meetings.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. My current situation in the state of Virginia is looking up. And again, my wife being retired, she said, don't put a timeframe on any, anything. It gets people's hopes up. So today's the eighteenth. We're hoping to get some more good information. So on my personal preference, I would suggest we have Zoom meeting at least one more time. And that way I'll be able to guarantee that I can join in. So other than that, I can't guarantee I will be face-to-face. That's my input.
Councilman Gilligan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also be very appreciative if counsel would consider meeting virtually for at least the first meeting in May. If not the second, I'm still having trouble stringing too many good days together in a row post-COVID. As Councilman Perry said, I would very much love to get back into person, but, but it's probably better if we have more attendance. And if we have the ability and authority to, to do it virtually for now, I think it'll be our best bet, at least for the next meeting.
Councilman Leopard.
I think it's a necessity that we meet in person on the May sixteenth meeting. I think it's imperative that we do. We could discuss that meeting where we're gonna go beyond the the first meeting in May, you know, I think we can do a Zoom and think it's imperative that we meet as a whole on the sixteenth of May and we can decide where we're gonna go from there.
That's fair. Yep. Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I really appreciate everybody considering doing that. And I would, it would be great if we could do one more Zoom. I can try to time things around the sixteenth to make sure it's not an issue. What, what happens for me is I'm not real mobile. And so when you think about the situation with City Hall, there's no great parking around there for somebody that can't walk very far. And I, the leg tires out and almost gives out pretty quickly. And so till I get parked, get in the building, I know we have an elevator, but it's quite the journey for me. And as I told some of you earlier, I hadn't, hadn't been to church in six months because I just can't move or sit. And I went yesterday to Canter, Mass., and it took me forever to get up the stairs. And then hard to stand there that whole time. So that's where my issues add. It's hard for me to sit and stand for long periods of time. And they are talking about possibly going back in. So I can try to time that around the sixteenth, but I do appreciate everybody's patience with this. I never dreamed this thing would end up like it is. I've never seen anybody else with this problem. So hopefully I will get through this thing soon, but I would appreciate one more meeting if possible, and I will make sure I'm there on the sixteenth. In person.
Appreciate the update. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Councilman Leopard. One more Zoom is fine, but past that, I think it's probably time that we go back to meeting in person. There's, you know, it just becomes convenient to do Zoom at some point. And I understand people have some health issues and family issues and things like that going on, but we need at least five. And at some point, we need to go back. Next thing you know, it's gonna be July. You know, and then we're doing three months for, you know, no COVID. But so, yeah, one more. I'm good with one more.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing, important thing to note here is I don't think we can go past June anyways. So really, the sixteenth would be the last option that we would have to do Zoom. And as I said, I, I really would strongly recommend that we have that in person. And but besides that, it sounds like everybody is in agreement or aligned, I should say, on May second being via Zoom. And then we will hopefully be able to, to have May sixteenth in person as well. Any other comments on that? Okay. Does anyone else have anything for the committee of the whole? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, underwritten communications tonight, we have Ohio Division of Liquor Control Stock Ownership Change for Reno's Pizza.
You're on mute, Councilman Perkins. I don't know how that happened.
Sorry. We have an owner, Division of Liquor Control Stock Ownership Change for Reno's Pizza signed under written communications. Is that just a transfer like via the family or, because it, it's not filled out, it's only half filled out. So I'm wondering who has information on that.
Yes, Law Director.
Yeah, Zach, I, I don't know for sure, but I would imagine, given the timeframe following a death in the Reno family in the last year, that that probably is part of maybe settling the estate, I would assume. Now, it could be other issues, but maybe that's all it is, is that a transfer of the stock among family members. I suppose we could inquire to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, but I'm not aware of any, any transfers that are outside the family.
That's, that's what I'd figured on the way it was filled out. I just wanted to verify that it wasn't going to some other party and we just didn't see the information or anything like that. Because I wanted to ask and see if anybody had any, you know, issues with the transfer handled, being handled.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I actually wondered the same thing, Zach, and was going to ask that. But other than that, since I'm on that committee, I'm fine with the transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the committee of the whole?
I'm fine with it as well, Zach.
Thank you. And just waving to me.
Did you want to say something, Councilman Jones?
No, I'm just gonna say I have no objections to that Reno transfer, but that's all.
All right, anything else for the committee at the whole? Okay, we will adjourn and reconvene at seven PM.
Councilman Perkins, can you tell me about the neat artwork behind you?
Those are displays. So they're metal. They're like metal posters. And we have, I don't know, probably six or seven sets. And we just kind of like rotated throughout the year. So it was getting warmer, closer to Fourth of July. So we put up like our patriotic ones there. This is actually our dining room.
Oh, wow.
Got a, yeah, they're made by, I don't know, an artist made those off whatever original pictures there were. So they're just magnets that go on the wall, basically.
That's really neat. And is there anything special you have to do to the wall to?
No, they, they come with a magnet that's got an adhesive on the back that won't take your paint or anything off. And you just put that on the wall and then those are metal and they just stick right to the magnet.
What a time to be alive.
Right.
Would ask you about yours, Ben, but I don't think we have that much time.
Yeah, I came to my classroom tonight to get away from my beautiful wife and children.
That's a good way to put it.
You can just talk, Councilman Jones.
Okay, we're not being recorded, are we?
Uh, yes, you are.
Okay, then. I had a personal comment for Law Director Howard, but I will tend to that later.
Anything you could say to Brett and you could say to us?
Then I'll say it.
True.
I have, I was in Virginia.
Thanks, Dan.
Cleaning out my sister's house. And I found a recipe book from, I don't know, I think nineteen sixty-two for Old Trinity Church. I wanted to get it to Mr. Howard, or, but I don't know where he live, I know where he lives, don't know his address, but I'll work that out. That's all. I just wanted to give him a heads up.
Well, thank you. And maybe we'll, we'll add it to the community kitchen library for recipes to be used by the community.
Oh, I have, I have a, a couple of those books as well. I believe I have one from the Betty Jane Center from the bicentennial. I'd be delighted to, I have some school cookbooks. Mom saved about everything. So I'd be delighted to, to note those as well.
I'm thinking, Brett, you know, you get the recipe book, bake some cookies, bring it to the May sixteenth meeting.
I'll see if Susan will help.
Regularly scheduled city council meeting in potluck.
Okay, it's seven PM. I would like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to order. At this time, the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Gilligan.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and help to assist our friends and neighbors and look over the finances and good people of the city. We're especially grateful to do that on the day after Easter. In your son's name, we pay, we pray, amen. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilligan. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Aye.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Present.
And Councilmember Rhodes.
But the record showed that six of the seven council members are present. Minutes for April fourth, regular and committee, the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any corrections, questions, or collisions? Seeing now the minutes will stand approved as presented. Committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Gilligan.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel, Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
A report, Madam President.
Recreation and public property, anyone from that committee have a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Perkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And economic development in downtown planning, Councilmember Yanatuno.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Committee of the whole, does anyone see the need to have a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing done, we are now under reports of the officers. His auto mayor, Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of very quick items before we get into Public Works Annual Report. I, first off, I want to thank all of our, our National Public Safety Telecommunicators. So that's what we call dispatchers here at the, at the local level. So last week was National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the United States. And I just want to give a thank you. I know I did on, on social media to our wonderful dispatchers that we have here in the city of Tiffin. They're really the unsung heroes because they're the, the first person that is there on the line when you're having the time of an emergency. And, and really, it's that person that very seldom do you ever get to meet or, or give a thank you to when you're in a time of crisis, whether it's a, a home robbery, whether it's a, a heart attack, a medical condition. They're the ones there answering the phone twenty-four hours a day, dispatching and really talking folks through the situation that, that of course, most people only call nine-one-one when it's a very serious issue. So I just want to thank all of our dispatchers, our safety telecommunications here at the city for a job well done as we, as we celebrated National Safety Telecommunicators Week last week. So thank you, dispatchers. A quick financial update. Hard to believe we're already more than halfway through the month of April. So far for the year, we are ahead of last year's numbers year to date. When we compare this date to last year in two thousand and twenty-one by about five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, which is about an eighteen percent increase. That, of course, has a lot to do with the fact that the tax dates are still different from what they were last year. So we will hopefully somewhere in June have a very, very good true-up picture of exactly where we are financially compared to last year at this time. The first part of this year is just a little different with the fact that we were still coming out of COVID last year. The deadlines were different. And later in the year, when folks had to have income taxes done. So we don't exactly have a true picture. That's why things are skewed. We, we know we've had a pretty solid start to two thousand and twenty-two financially. But I, I truthfully don't believe that we're going to see an eighteen percent increase hold up for the entire year. But we are expecting to see a revenue increase overall. We chatted a little bit about it in Committee of the Whole, but for those that joined us late, that may be watching from home. The Tiffin Parks and Recreation Department is applying for a grant from the Seneca County Parks District. We would like to use that to fence in that beautiful new all-inclusive playground that will be structured, or that will be completed later this year. The playground will cost nearly eight hundred thousand dollars. And by fencing it in, it will allow parents that have multiple kids to keep better watch over their children, but also knowing that the playground is all-inclusive. Kids with certain developmental issues and other problems that will be utilizing this playground, one of the, the, one of the aspects that they deal with is at times, certain children will run off. And by having this area fenced in, it's going to make lives a lot easier for parents, grandparents, guardians, et cetera, who are out there utilizing the playground. So I would hope counsel strongly consider suspending that this evening. The deadline is later this month. So that Bryce and Mason can apply for that grant and get a nice fence around the park. And of course, we're not going to just throw up some ugly chain link fence. We're going to make sure we do it right and put in a very nice black powder coated fence that will last a long time, zero maintenance, but also look good around this playground structure at Hedges Boyer Park. Speaking of that playground, I want to thank Team Kena. They donated one thousand dollars to the all-inclusive playground. Kena had some auditor, auditory issues. And they're donating some signage that can be used at that playground for children who will be using it that are similar to Kena. I would like to let everyone know that we have made significant progress on the trail development plan by our consultant. We do expect that that will be completed well in advance of the deadline, probably in June of this year sometime. And of course, we'll, we'll share the findings from counsel and let you all see the plan once it has been finished. That is for the multi-use trail system throughout the city of Tiffin that we're hoping that we can begin to bite off pieces of and create a more healthy community through multi-use trails within the city. Finance renovations at the finance office, the bids are due here at the end of the month for, for that remodel and renovation. It has been almost forty years since that office has had any kind of a remodel. So I know the finance office is very excited for this. And it's just, it's what we have to do here with the city. You know, too many times buildings go into disrepair, governments do not take care of their buildings. I want to say that the city of Tiffin is not that way. We take care of our historic structures here at the city. Whether it's tuck pointing, whether it's roofing, whether it is keeping up with remodels and handicap accessibility, we take care of our buildings here. Because that building to reconstruct something totally from scratch, you're talking millions of dollars. And instead, we're going to spend fractions of that just to, to get it remodeled so that it can survive for the next forty years and do the prudent thing with our tax dollars. Because of that, the office will be closed beginning sometime in May until the beginning or middle of September. We time this, of course, to be done well after tax season wrapped up so that it was not inconveniencing the thousands of individuals that transverse that office over the last couple of months. But then also to have things completed before we start the very, the very lengthy budget process this fall. Councilman Jones, if you haven't seen it, the stone base has been installed at Nature Trails Park. We just need the black top to be laid as well as the playground. But I do want to invite not only Councilman Jones, but all of you to a ribbon cutting that we're going to host for that new park, May the twenty-sixth at four PM. So May twenty-sixth, four PM, we will be doing a ribbon cutting ceremony to, to officially kick off the new playground and the remodel of Nature Trails Park in the second ward. So I hope you all can attend that. I also would like to thank David Zach for his years of service at the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership. David, as you all probably have read in the local news media, is, is headed off to Crawford County and Bucyrus. We, of course, wish David nothing but the best in his new endeavors at Crawford County. And the search will begin here immediately for his replacement in Tiffin and Seneca County. We all know that we demand nothing but the best in Tiffin and Seneca County when it comes to nearly everything, but especially our economic development, community development. And I have no doubts that we're going to have some very top-tier candidates apply for this position. And we will make a successful hire so that we do not lose any of our momentum and will even take this into yet another year higher. I want to congratulate, congratulate Brittany Trammell and Brad Price on opening Braised in Balance. That is the new meal prep station that will open at the chandelier in downtown Tiffin. They're moving here from Fremont, Ohio, because they outgrew the business in Fremont. So they're excited. We're excited. I think downtown Tiffin, the partnership with the chandelier is just a fantastic fit. So welcome Brittany and Brad to the Tiffin community. You're going to find that this is a very special place to call home. I'd also like to congratulate High Life Recovery. That is the new recovery center that is opened here in Tiffin. We had a ribbon cutting there last week. Great turnout. It's just exciting because, as we know, there are many folks in this community across the state of Ohio that struggle with different addictions, drug abuse, et cetera. High Life Recovery helps empower those individuals to get their lives back on track and just, and, and better themselves and, and get back integrated into the community. So very happy for this facility to locate in Tiffin. And, and just excited that they're going to start helping people better their lives, improve their lives, and get things back on track. And then last but not least, congratulations to Keebler Shoes. Ribbon cutting for their new business. They've moved back into downtown Tiffin at what was been known for years as the triple-A building on East Market Street. It's exciting, you know, oldest continuous operating retail store, a hundred and ninety straight years of operation. One more decade, which I have no doubts they're going to get there, they'll hit two hundred years. So we talk about our city's bicentennial and two-hundredth birthday this year. And here we are with a business in Tiffin that is just ten years short of our city's birthday. So congratulations to Clinton and Kimberly Wood on that, on that move. The store looks phenomenal. Tiffanites, get in there, check it out, bring your friends. It's just great to have such a cool business right here in Tiffin. Couple of events coming up tomorrow. Soul Boutique is hosting a block party. So that is tomorrow, April the nineteenth, downtown Tiffin, four PM till seven PM. They're bringing in food trucks. They've got entertainment. They've got giveaways. So if you're available, four PM to seven PM tomorrow evening, the Soul Boutique Boutique Block Party in downtown Tiffin. This coming Thursday is the first third Thursday of two thousand and twenty-two. That is the Blooming Arts Stroll in downtown Tiffin. Please join us. Got a great evening planned. Thank you to the Downtown Committee and the volunteers for pulling off that event. We're excited to see what third Thursday brings this year and the rest of the events. This coming Sunday, April the twenty-fourth, is the Earth Day Celebration. The Parks and Rec, Park and Recreation Department partners every year with the Franciscan Earth Literacy Center on St. Francis. That event is held at the St. Francis Campus at the Franciscan Earth Literacy Center. Begins at one PM this Saturday, April the twenty-fourth. And then last but not least, all of you are invited to the ribbon cutting at Tiffin University for their new Science and Technology Center, which is scheduled for April the twenty-eighth at four PM. That is the new building that you see. The new brick building on Miami Street. So the ribbon cutting for the TU Science and Technology Center, April the twenty-eighth, four PM. All of you are invited to that. Are there any questions for me before we get into Public Works Annual Report this evening?
Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, I have a comment concern, and maybe you've already even thought about it, and you don't really need to answer me tonight. But I am so excited about the project at the park and I'm so excited about the fencing going around it. But I have a concern about some parents, people that think if they go there, their dogs can go there. Is there going to be an issue with dogs in that park? Because I can just see a child running off and a dog chasing them and stuff. I, I think it's a dangerous situation. And, you know, maybe we're gonna allow, maybe we're not. It's just something to think about. Because that's the first thing I thought of when you said the fence was going up. It's like, oh, boy, people are gonna bring their pets. And this is for kids, not the pets.
Certainly. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to our tent. Certainly. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I haven't given it any thought. That's not to say that Bryce and Mason have not. But we'll be sure to talk with them about that and and see what they and also the park board come up with as far as a recommendation. We do allow dogs, I believe, in all of our city parks. So that would require additional signage if that was not to be permitted within that area. But that would be something for the park board and for the park staff to begin to tackle. So we can certainly pass that along to them, Councilwoman.
Yeah, because I've been around those children. I have a grandson that's autistic and that really just kind of scares me a little bit. And I love dogs, you know, I've had dogs all my life, but. Just a little concerned about this. I appreciate you thinking about that. Thank you.
Appreciate the insight. Any other questions, comments?
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Not so much a question, a comment. Mayor, you talked about Nature Trails Park. I got back in Tiffin here this past Friday. And I went down there, I lose track of days, Friday, Saturday, and I was looking over the stone in the. Oval, if you will, and past Councilman Joe Hartzell came out and him and I were discussing it. It's been a long time that that park has seen some improvement. So I was pleased, he was pleased, and I'm sure the community is going to be pleased. So thank you about that.
We're we're all thrilled for it. You know, I I grew up in that area. I grew up on West Davis Street, lived there for probably twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years of my life. And as a kid, that was always one of the parks that we ride our bikes down to at Nature Trail. So I'm glad as well to see it being rehabbed and brought back to life. I think that whole neighborhood is looking forward to it. Any other questions or comments? Well, if not, I'm going to bring Brandon Burner, our Superintendent of Public Works in here. And he should be coming in and Brandon, you should have the ability to share your screen if you need that. If you don't, let me know.
Yeah, I should have the ability here and let me just kind of get myself situated. Think we can get her. Established here. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
There we sit. You should be able to see that from the start there. So. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to to sit in front and give my annual report. The team and I are very happy to serve this community and I'm happy to be here to represent all their work that that we accomplished. I do speak very quickly, which is sometimes a problem for our electronic devices. So I I will, I will try to be cognizant of that, but I will not get offended if you didn't hear something or need me to recap. Please, by all means, stop me and let me know. Same thing for questions. You know, if we derail something for a different for a question, that's that's a time well spent. As we move to the next slide here, my agenda. Will the, much like last year, we'll do a deep dive into what twenty twenty-one looked like. And then we'll take some, we'll touch on some notes for what next year and maybe beyond looks like for the Public Works Department. So I showed you this slide last year, primarily the same. Our mission has not changed. The what you'll see in red there, we have bumped up to seven total on the street maintenance side compared to six last year. We started using the seasonals last year and actually maintain one on to full-time, full-time staff, which worked well. For the department and helps us keep stride a lot better. And and you'll just get a little chance to to find out how that employee worked and it was it was a great fit. So that's exciting news as as we move forward. And you know, as I don't know if all of you are familiar with what we do at the Public Works. And I know that we've, you know, I bumped this kind of laundry list of things up here last time. This is just my street and sewer. I have another slide of this. Feel free to to kind of to to read about, ask questions if you have them or leave it at that. I'll leave it up here for just a few moments. And then this, like I said, streets and sewers, and then we also have arborists, electricians and our mechanics. So a little bit of everything, we're a bit of a Swiss Army knife when it's. Who does that? Well, if if the answer is, we don't know, it's shortly after is Public Works. So interestingly enough, we appreciated what Judy Ryder did for so many years on that, working that shade tree. Shade Tree Commission work and we've actually picked that up as proponents under our arborist position. So it's a good fit for us and we're happy to to take that on. But again, we do appreciate what she did for us in the in her in her time here. So as I move forward, this is going to be my highlight sheet. I will have a couple of these and I will tell you, green is good and red is bad. The up and down may or may not matter and and by bad, I mean it it does not help my. My time or accomplishment as much. It might not be a bad thing. It might just be more time than I spend. So don't don't read into things one way or the other. If it does not have a an arrow there, it doesn't mean that it. You know, it's the first time we ever done it. Maybe I just didn't have the the data from last year, but I wanted to reflect it to you. So as we look at these, you know, right up front, I'm a little a little bummed. We our deficit was from generated and completed work orders was was just over a hundred there, was about fifty last year. However, part of that reason is we've taken on a lot more routine work and accomplish routine work when demand. Things like, you know, I need this move. I I have this problem. We've taken the time to establish some priorities for some of that routine work that needs to get done and doesn't become an emergency later. So that's also a good news story, too. Huge, a huge number there is the. The increase of street sweeping. So we actually added fifty lane miles into lane miles swept. This will increase substantially this year as well. We've, we we do the downtown every month. We've, we try to hit. Our state routes on a on a routine basis and cycle through them. But this year, we will actually hit all of our curved roads twice a year, much like you would plow streets. So we'll do them once in the spring, which we've, we're well underway in and once in the fall. So looking forward to continuing to bump that number up. Our snow and ice removal went, it was a lot, lot less than previous years. So you see a lot of green, but it didn't start snowing, you know, heavily until January. None of us were upset about that. So that was a good thing. Leaf bags, interestingly enough, was down about about five thousand bags less that we sold. I don't know if people just held on to them from last year. We're we're watching out for inflation or what, but. We are, we are hoping that there's more just more people watching their, watching their leaves and everything like that in the community. The trees planted, removed, pruned and stumps ground is a big number. That's because that's all heavy labor. There's some, there's, these numbers are still fluctuating and some of these are areas where we've, we've been pushing back. Woods early last year and a lot of our like trails, things like that. So a lot of those removals and pruning are some smaller trees or some saplings that that really needed to be taken care of before they were errant trees. But our arborists have established a a regular maintenance program for pruning and we're incredibly proud of that. So we wanted to highlight that as well. Depending on your questions, I'll move on to this following slide for the the second, second round of ups and downs. Sinkholes, I talked to you about this last year, but the sinkhole is down there towards the bottom left. I talked about that last year and by golly, I think I told you about eight last year and we actually killed ten and they were. None of them were fun and we continue to get more. But you know, we we are doing more permanent repairs than maybe we might have done in the past to try to prevent us from having to come back in those. So definitely very proud of the guys and what they've done to to get these this more lasting maintenance have performed. Sewer replaced, you see eight hundred fifteen linear feet. I will show you a bunch of pictures. Of that later on, a couple of slides away. But I am incredibly proud of the guys and what they got accomplished this year. You know, that's not just us. We also use contractors and you know, you saw our ask for for more money because we had a couple of emergencies that, you know. We had to, we had to accomplish and and we did a little bit more to make sure that it was, we didn't have to dig back in there. But that's, that's a really incredible amount considering most years prior to this, we were at about a hundred feet on a typical year. So. Finally, I want to point out two more things. The sidewalk three, I'm sorry, sidewalks repaired there, middle on the right hand side. That show that looks like it's a bad thing. It's less sidewalks, but I will tell you, my concrete crews and tree crews went out throughout last winter. And identified the worst of the worst sidewalk repairs. So what you see here, although it's fewer in square footage, is actually more important, more technical, more difficult and a much greater benefit. To our sidewalks throughout town. So I'm proud of the guys for for taking the time to identify and repair those those issues. If you look at the asphalt repairs here on the right hand side towards the bottom, we saved about fifteen thousand bucks. Simply by doing asphalt repairs on ourselves, especially the handwork. We can't save it on doing some of the longer stretches like what what Matt manages with the road and bridge levy does a great job with. But for these hand, the handwork, we we get, we pay pretty heavily, not unfair prices, but there's a lot of labor involved. And our our guys have put in the the elbow grease. And saved a heck of a lot of money and that's that's reflected even with my my cost for trucks and personnel. You know, that's a, that's a one to one. So thanks a lot to our guys and and coming up with that, which we typically didn't do a whole lot of in the past. And then finally, crack ceiling. You know, as we continue to try to take care of these roads, you know, we're getting a heck of a lot more roads paved through the engineer and those dollars. And as we get those roads put in, we're doing a lot of work to make that semi or permanent repairs. And so in this case, a semi-permanent like crack ceiling where it keeps the water out for longer. We actually do that on a two, five and nine year cycle. And so this is actually two little more lane miles than last year, which will continue to increase as we continue to pave more. So but it's worth every every minute and and dollar we spend on it to get that done. So. I will move on to the next. Unless there's any questions on the kind of last two slides of ups and downs. None heard? A couple, a couple of equipment wins. So I appreciate the council's help and making that a reality from the from the budget standpoint. I'll talk that mowing equipment a little bit later. That's pretty, pretty huge. And if you look at the bottom there on the equipment wins, I talked about dump truck maintenance investment. If you see the gentleman hanging the flower, the flower panthers there, he's in his harness on the on the bucket loader. That's Damian Cisco. He came to our team about a year and a half ago, two years ago, somewhere around there. And with a heck of a lot of experience in diesel maintenance and he has made our. The workhorses of our fleet have been have been humming because of him and we definitely appreciate it. Money well spent and and thanks to him for for the work that he does there. I'm going to move to the next slide here. I I told you here's that I told you eight hundred fifteen linear feet, right? More than that, but that's the the ones that we have specific projects for. I will tell you, for for those who who had a chance, I don't know if you have an iPhone, but sometimes they'll do their own slideshow for you. Well, my slideshow from my work phone, which is an iPhone, popped up with a bunch of sewer repairs as my like urine highlight, which was the grossest. It was supposed to be like my kids, you know, playing on the playground or no, not from the work phone. It was a lot of these pictures. But but it's also pretty impressive, the amount of work we got done. And like I said, a couple of times where we we reached out to contractors to help us out where we couldn't reach, but then we did a heck of, you know, a heck of a lot of labor on the backside. Just amazing what we were able to accomplish. If you look at my next slide here, this is streets, even even more accomplished here, too. Tried some, tried some new things to make some things that weren't necessarily tricks on our bag before. If you see on the top, on the bottom right there, I'm going to highlight that first because that's pretty impressive. We actually put, we talked to you last year about putting a a concrete base on the road at Birchwood Drive due to the sinking of that road. This is part partway through. Mason Guyetta led that crew and did a heck of a job on some of those, some of those tasks, like using, using the level, things like that on. On around curves and things that we don't typically do and did eat at a bang up job along with the rest of the crew working that. So we appreciate that. But you know, all these things that we told you we do, the the one thing I do want to point out, I kind of, I kind of glossed over it quickly when we talked about new equipment. But we got several new mowers, right? Two new zero turn mowers and one large articulated boom mower. And if you look on that bottom left, like those little purple dots, those are fourteen locations. For mowing and that's for our small mowers, right? There's probably another six to seven or more, depending on who hasn't mowed their grass locations that we hit once to twice a week. And then on top of that, I have about thirty-four locations for my large mowers, depending on where you are along, along areas that don't have sidewalks or at the landfill, things like this, right? Because of the equipment that we invested in, we actually gained about forty plus staff hours every two months. That's a a full work week for an individual that we gain back by just having the right equipment on hand and using it properly. So it's a testament to to our guys getting out and using the equipment and identifying what equipment we really need to have on hand. And then, you know, letting them flourish with it. So it's it's been amazing. So. Couple specialties here, arborist crews, I told you, they're working a management cycle. So young tree training and sector printing where we're going piece by piece around town. I'm really, really proud of my arborists and the way that we're making this a methodical, a methodical program. Because it's it's easy to look at a tree that needs to be taken down, stop in front of that tree, do everything on that tree. It's easy to get that call because people give us very intense calls about their about their specific tree. And it's tough not to support those when you know it's it's really bothering somebody. However, we are establishing a path that will allow us to properly manage this forest, given the the size of staff that we have. And I'm proud of them every day for for how they're they're pulling that forward. City electricians have done a heck of a job. Actually, we just finished a couple of those unwarranted traffic tunnel removals based based on some availability to pull poles down. But there's a couple of spots there in town that have greatly greatly become much more efficient due to their their work and their continuous work on our aerial. Electrical accoutrements, which is awesome. And finally, you know, the this, I don't know if you can see this kitten on the screen. Brenda Young, my dispatcher, got a call that there was one stuck in the catch basin. But she has a new cat now. So we got her, we got her saved. It was even more impressive than the fire department, but you just had to be there. So. Looking at the way ahead. You know, there's a, there's a lot that we're doing with technology. I don't know, Matt Watson probably mentioned it in the past in his brief. And you know, we're really looking at leveraging G I S software and at looking at some of our, some of our experts around here and allowing them to. Push that technology forward to work for us. And and right now, we're at that that happy medium that we're finding where. You know, even faster than what I had expected, where we just have. Have grabbed on to some of those, the tools that just needed to be made available to us and have had have made a made them. Made them work very, very well. So we want to continue to do the routine things routinely. And that's where, you know, some of these systems that we've started or built from scratch will will. We're we're shaping into something that's going to be even more longstanding for us. So we're pretty excited about that. And seeing some of these things, you know, and for instance, and what I'll tell you is like. For instance, our snow plowing. We remarked that, you know, we started actually plowing regularly and about January is when snow started falling regularly like it would normally in December. And in about February, after several snows, we all kind of looked around at each other like. What, why aren't the plows breaking? Right? We typically you have a like the shoes that hold the plows. Or the the mold boards along the bottom will will be broken or pulled or whatever, because you're running into manholes, you're running into. Places where the pavement's not not quite set right or you're catching curbs that are that are buck teeth. I'm not saying that those areas don't still exist, but I'm telling you that they are far less. Part of that's really the like the road and bridge levy and the funds that we've put into the roads in some of the worst areas first, right? Doing it by priority. And the other part is all the work that my team does day in, day out to adjust our manholes, adjust our catch bases, make sure that those those items are are where they need to be. So it has second and third order effects both for us and for our residences at large. So with that, I'd just like to hit a couple more special things before I open it up to remaining questions. You can read some of these here, but again, I I talked once about Judy Ryder. Again, she did so much for our department that. We didn't realize until it was about time for her to leave and you know, that's that's a tough, a tough way to say goodbye, but I I, you know, I can't say thank you enough to her. Also, Jason Windsor, who was an acting police chief for quite a while. You know, he was a great target. And so we kind of miss having somebody to make fun of, you know, now we have Dave Pauli in there, but you you win some, you lose some. And also to his dispatchers who get to call me at about, you know, three A M. is usually is kind of the typical with some really, really good news. You know, I I, as much as they they take and they have to do that, I definitely appreciate. What they do for us and what they do for the city, getting those messages to the right people at the right time, even if it's not the most fun to call somebody at that time in the morning. So other than that, you know, to the Tiffin residents, thank you so much for 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 what you do, especially those of you. We come across residents who are not always having the best day. We work with sewers and we work with streets and sometimes those aren't affecting you in the in the best way. And for the folks who, especially the folks who can come out there and still say thank you and show us. Show us appreciation. We we appreciate you, too. And finally, to my crew again, like I can't say enough about about how well they work. And you know, I've been pushing them hard and we're at the point now where they're pushing me hard, too, to get to to keep it moving forward. So. With that, I will open it up to any questions from the group.
Brandon, I just want to thank you for the job well done out there, that department. It's, it's been a well-oiled machine for some time, but you've really just taken it up another notch out there with what you've been able to do with your leadership and and the accomplishments. And it's just incredible the amount of man-hours that you're saving with having the right equipment. It's just incredible the amount of man hours that you're saving with having the right equipment at the right place and having the people trained and it. You guys are just doing great things out at public work. So I'm very appreciative of that. I know we say it in closed meetings, but need to say it publicly as well, that you all just do a phenomenal job out there at the street department. So. Thank you. And, um, I guess we can turn it over to council if they have any questions. You may have to Brandon exit though, your screen share so that, uh, the council president can see her council members to call on them. There you go. Thanks, Brandon.
Uh, yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Mr. Burner, for this, uh, update, which is great. But, and you don't have to do it now, but I want to get with you because I have an expert in the second ward who knows how to. Maintain alleys and he keeps talking about dirty fifty-seven stone and clean fifty-sevens. And I wouldn't know a fifty-seven from a fifty-six. So someday down the road I'll get with you, you can educate me on that. And. More important, trees removed a hundred and ninety-eight divided by fifty-two weeks. That's four a week. That is time consuming. That is a huge undertaking. And then stumps ground a hundred and ten. Fifty-two, do the math, two a week. That just sounds like a heck of a lot of time involved in. Doing that. So you must be doing a good job. So I'll stand down.
Thanks, Councilman Jones. Yeah. And, uh, that's the Arborist Crew primarily working those, those, those stumps are incredibly painful. And a lot of those tree cuttings, you know, that's one metric we want to see is to match our plantings and our removals, right? We're not there right now because a lot of those removes, like I said, are a lot of, a heck of a lot of saplings that need to be taken down and getting out of the way before they become problems. Um, so as we look in years, years ahead, we're, we're trying to match those plantings and, and removals. Um, and the stump's ground, yes, that's, that is incredibly impressive, the amount of those work those guys did to get that out.
Uh, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I had nothing but, uh, good things to say about your department. We called down there for an issue down here on Wayne Side Drive with some curbs. Uh, looked like they were coming out of the ground, uh, probably six or eight inches in a couple of spots. And within a week they were down here, ripped them out, replaced everything and fixed it and looks fantastic. So I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Does anyone else have any, anything for Brandon? Yes, Councilwoman Yana Tuno.
First of all, Ms. Burner, I always appreciate your quick response anytime I have a question or need things done. And there's one that's, it's really kind of a dirty job that I didn't know you did until the last year or two. Um, at one point we had this really big dead skunk out on Miami Street and I'm like, what the heck do we do with that? And all of a sudden your guys came by and picked it up like wonderful. So last year there was this big, unfortunately this big huge dead cat in the road. And my husband, I look at you, what the heck are we going to do with this thing? Do you put it in your garbage? What do you do? And I'm like, well, you know, public works picked it up before. I'm going to call them. And you guys came right, like ten, fifteen minutes later came and got that thing because I don't know what I would have done with it. And, and so that's just one unsung thing you guys do. That I really did appreciate because I had no idea what to do with it. So thank you even for that.
Fortunately, I have not experienced the dead animals, uh, interactions, but, um, I, I, I echo Councilwoman Yana Tuno's. Uh, quick, quick response anytime that I contact you guys, you guys have always been right on it. Whether it's, hey, this is when we're going to take care of it or, uh, you guys just take care of it right away. So really appreciate that. Um, does anyone else have anything for Brandon? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we, we talked about the dispatchers for the fire department. Uh, police department, et cetera, et cetera. And Mr. Burn mentioned Brenda. Brenda's a dispatcher, in my opinion, at Miami Street. And she meets my three Ps of profession or customer service. She's polite, professional and patient. So I just want to give a pat in the back to Brendan, the dispatcher. Maybe that's not her title, but she does a fine job on Miami Street.
She is in fact a dispatcher, Councilman Jones, and for sure, you're a hundred percent.
Awesome. Okay. Well, if nothing else, thank you, Brandon. Mayor, anything else from you?
No, Madam President. My report is concluded unless there are any additional questions.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, okay, and moving into, uh, the next report for Council and Forest.
No report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Awesome. Thank you. And Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that takes us into written communications.
Thank you. We have Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty-two dash fourteen. To amend the two thousand twenty-two Budget Ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate funds into the park budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty-two dash fourteen has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-six.
And we have, uh, notice of a. Stock ownership change at Reno's Pizza and Pasta, um, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Um, this will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh.
You are back on mute randomly again.
Sorry. Discuss this with the committee and we are in agreement that this can be signed and returned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with no opposition, this will be held on file in the clerk's office, no opposition. Uh, that takes us into oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may raise their hand via Zoom. And, uh, direct your questions to the council president. Looks like we have one.
Yeah, Madam President, you have a hand, uh, Bryce Riggs. Bring him in.
Yay.
Good afternoon, Council, Madam President and council members. As Bryce Riggs, I'm just speaking on. Behalf of the Citizens for Tiffin, the committee that advocates for the passage of the road and bridge levy. It seemed like it was yesterday that I was here speaking to council members about how important this road and bridge levy was for our community. Uh, in the short time that it's been passed, and we can all see firsthand the amount of increase in orange barrels and roadwork that's been done. But I just want to get on council real quick and explain a few things just for the public about, uh, different aspects of it. So the first is obviously ballot language. You'll see the balloting language and, uh, when you get the ballot early going to get started. And then the, uh, the primaries made third. The proposed municipal income tax, uh, is how it states and reads on the ballot language. Note that it does say proposed municipal income tax for the city of Tiffin, but this is actually a continuation. Of existing, uh, road and bridge levy that's already in place. I had read like that from a legal standpoint. Uh, we've had many community members and the, the community's been very busy out advocating for the passage of the road and bridge levy. Uh, we've received really honestly just all positive feedback about the work that the city of Tiffin has done with these dollars. But just wanted to remind folks that since the passage of the levy, uh, in two thousand eighteen, the cities leveraged these funds for over five million dollars. In state and federal grant funding dollars. I think we could all, uh, many communities around the state of Ohio and other, uh, states. Advocate obviously for, uh, additional road dollars and infrastructure dollars, but it's really have, have the money in hand to go after these projects. Know that these, these projects are going to get completed. They just needed, uh, some state, uh, natural funding. To get the work done. Additionally, um, road funding has been increased significantly since the passage, so average spend. Uh, prior was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, and since two thousand nineteen, it's been increased about three point two million dollars plus. And so I just really wanted to advocate how important this is, not only for just our community's infrastructure, but also other departments who depend on this. Because you should know that, you know, this used to eat away at the, um. Capital budget and wouldn't allow for long-term projects and other projects to get funded, but these dollars are now being used for, uh, just road and bridge dollars. So. I just want to jump on here and just remind folks that is on the ballot and how important it is for the city of Tiffin in the future. Uh, I, I have told people, uh, trust the process and obviously trust the administration. I think, you know, folks who have watched council have seen Brandon, I've seen Matt Watson. Have seen Dale, Aaron and others talk about, you know, the plan in place and just trust the process. Uh, this isn't going to get turned around overnight. It's been significantly over, underfunded for a number of years. And so allowing these dollars to really play out and, um, Brian talked about, you know, the areas are most needed. There are a lot of areas that need work, uh, but the city of Tiffin knows that and they're using these dollars and leveraging, uh, state and federal dollars to, to do more with less. So just wanted to, uh, speak a little more on how important this is. And I'd open up for any questions. We've been hitting the, hitting the streets, uh, Matt Watson and, and Brett Howard have been out. Been doing some stuff on social media. We have a website, citizensfortiffin.com. We've had, uh, I think a couple of different, uh, letters in the Advertise Tribune. Second News Daily and as well as, uh, a story in the Advertise Tribune the last week about, uh, how important this is. So open up there. Are there any questions about the levy?
Thank you, Bryce. Does anyone have any questions for Bryce?
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate it.
If there are anyone else, uh, from the public who wishes to address council, please click the button on your screen that says raise hand and we can bring you in now. I'm not seeing any hands, Madam President. There was someone that, uh, was going to speak, I thought this evening, but I don't see the hand up. And I hate to just bring someone in without them knowing that they're being brought in either. Um. Yeah.
Um, okay, well, let's, let's move in, uh, to motions. Um.
There we go. Okay. I will bring Mr. Karian in.
Okay.
Sometimes that button moves around too. I, I know if you're on a different device, sometimes at the top of the screen, sometimes at the bottom of the screen. Other times you have to click the more button to even get to it. So it probably took a little bit of time. So.
No worries.
He on his way in. There we go. And you'll just have to unmute yourself, uh, Mr. Karian, and then we should be able to hear you.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Am I unmuted for you?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much for giving me this opportunity. Um. Basically, um. I don't know if, uh. The mayor or anybody's been apprised of, I've been, uh, talking to Nick who's been a, a wonderful, uh, support, um. Uh, and what I'm trying to accomplish. Uh. I, first of all, I, I'll be brief. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Um. I give you a little quick, real quick bio. I am a, uh. Stage four colorectal cancer survivor, um, but I'm not here to talk about myself. Uh, I'm sixty-five months. Cancer-free. Um. Uh, um, was basically, um. Oh, kind of, uh, became immersed in pediatric, uh. Cancer, uh, advocacy. Oh. It's going on about forty-four months now, right in there. And, um. As of last year, I was the one that, uh, submitted, um. The, um, county commissioners to, uh, like the courthouse keep a low, uh, gold for. The last day of September, which they willingly obliged, um, which I appreciate a great deal. Um. I also absolutely was very grateful to see Merrimott's, um. Last September, recognize September as pediatric cancer, childhood cancer awareness month. Um. Now, basically, I don't want you to think I'm going to come at you every month because there are, there are twelve, um. Major types of childhood cancer. However, um. The reason that go gray in May is so special to me and, and a lot of us. In the child, uh, cancer, uh, army, so to speak. Basically, um, although leukemia, ALL acute lymphonic leukemia is the number one diagnosis. Um, childhood brain cancer is by far in a way. The number one cause of death i- in pediatric cancer. And, um. I can give you numbers all day long. I, I'm what I have, um. I don't even have my notes in front of me, quite honestly, but I don't need them. Um. Basically, uh, you've got four major types. You've got, um. Glial blastoma, neuroblastoma, medulloblastoma, and then you've got DIPG. Which is, um, unfortunately, uh, a no-win situation, basically for children. Uh, uh, it basically, depending on what site you go on, you're looking at. Zero point three to zero point six percent chance of making it five years. It's, it's a type of cancer that starts in the pond of, of your brain stem. And what happens is. This, this massive tumor, um, in, instead of. Like staying together where, where a surgery is possible to remove this tumor, it separates. And, and it kind of perforates, which, um, I can appreciate that because that's what happened to me. Only mine was in my colon and in my, my large intestine. However, um. Basically, um, what we're looking at, uh, right now i- in, in our country. Worldwide, but, uh, I try to concentrate on, on United States statistics. Um, we're looking at, uh. Well, in a late grade, uh, any late grade stage. Brain cancer, you're looking at between zero point four to two point seven percent survival rate. Um, what I'm trying to do is, you know, basically it's just to raise and broaden the, the awareness. And in my, um, personal opinion. Um, and, and not, like I said, I appreciate what was done last year so much. Um, Seneca County, um, unfortunately with my research, we're lacking behind in, um. As far as membership, as far as, uh. Oh, um, and. All of the, uh, awareness advocacy, um, groups that are recognized. Or, and I belong to probably about thirty-one of them, I think, last, last count. Um, um. Out of eighty-eight counties, I think I've seen our membership at about number seventy-seven. Um. I would like to increase that. And, uh, this is a step that I'm, I'm trying to take, uh, in that direction. Um. Um, I don't know if anybody has been in touch with Mr. Coon, but I do have a also's. Um, Bryce has been wonderful. I have a event for July fourth for a fundraiser. And I'm probably going to be coming at the mayor one more time this year in September. Um, so, um. Basically, I, I don't want to keep you and I, and, uh, there's really no sense in dragging this on. If, uh, the city government feels like it's worthy, I would be so very grateful. If not, then, um, I will still support you one hundred and ten percent. Um, I. I believe in this administration. Uh, you've got my complete undivided support and attention. And that's really all I have, um, for you folks this evening. I really do appreciate your time. And, uh, your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karian. Um, really appreciate your, your, um, the, all the information that you provided this evening. Um, Mayor, is there, is there a specific request here? And I apologize if I missed it. Um, I just want to make sure that we. We take care of anything that we need to.
Yeah, Mr. Karian, um, what, how can we specifically help you? What would you, I mean, obviously a proclamation, uh, maybe the courthouse. Lit, what else can we do to, to assist this cause?
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, the courthouse, um. That is something I will petition, um, the county for in September. Um, what I'm asking for in May, um. Um, what I'm asking for in May, um, it's uh, basically a proclamation. Um, that May is recognized nationally in this country as child cancer awareness, a brain cancer, uh, child cancer awareness month. Um, uh, just like you, you, last year, you recognized September as you declared a proclamation uh, for uh, child cancer awareness. Now, that's a broad spectrum. As I said, each month has its own. But I'm, like I said, I'd have no intention of of
Sure.
Because there's there's one for um, leukemia, there's one for sarcomas, um, all your bone marrow. There's, it goes on and on. Uh, the reason that uh, brain cancer that I that I'm asking for this is because it is the number one uh, cause of death in children. And as far as um, in pediatric cancer. So I feel like um, I would just like to broaden the public's um, awareness on that. Um,
Sure.
However, um, as I said, uh, I, this is just something that I wanted to bring in front of the council and in front of the mayor and in front of, you know, everybody and the city government and the in whole and 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 see where you stand, you know, um.
Yeah, Mr. Kieran, we a hundred percent, we we want to help you get the word out. So I consider it done. We'll do a proclamation and and get that on social media and whatever else we can do to assist. We will uh, we'll help you with it, especially, you know, it's definitely close to all of us. We've all known some, some youth in the community that we've helped over the years that has struggled with with uh, with a brain tumor or cancer or something. So we're we're happy to assist you with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great, Mr. Mayor. And um, what you just mentioned, I think is very important because I have failed in my attempts. Um, I've been shut down kind of uh, as far as social media getting the word out. So if I could please have a little bit of support there, um, as far as um, uh, you know, local media, um, that would be great.
Yeah, we we will happily help you with that. We'll be in touch about it, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very much.
Mr. Kieran, have a great.
Thank you, Mr. Kieran.
Thank you all. Good night.
Okay, Mayor, is there anyone else wishing to address council?
I don't, it does not appear so. No more hands, Madam President.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we will move into motions. Are there any motions this evening? Seeing none, we will move into resolutions and ordinances.
Thank you, Madam President. Resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council to continue certain tax incentive agreements with local businesses and property owners and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen.
Resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen introduced by Dan Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Scott D. Horniman to serve a four-year term on the Civil Service Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
This is the first reading of Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of uh, twenty-two dash fourteen.
There's a motion to pass Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen. Is there a second, Councilman Gillik?
Please, a second, the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillik.
If I may, just very briefly, I've just been so impressed with uh, Mr. Horniman and his communication with city council, and I believe he'll be an excellent addition um, to this commission.
Awesome, thank you. Um, if there's no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on passage.
Councilmember Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen passes with a vote of six to zero.
Resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution agreeing to cooperate with the Seneca County Park District for the purpose of providing park improvements and authorizing the park and recreation director and mayor to send a grant application and related documents and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for uh, city council suspension of the three reading rule and media passage Resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen. Is there a second? Uh, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Our second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second for suspension. Is there any discussion? Uh, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think the mayor described this very well earlier in his report. And uh, uh, this is a time-sensitive request and uh, it's a reason for the suspension.
Councilman Leopard. There's no further discussion, uh, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-four introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement for sanitary sewer purposes from AAI Leasing LLC on four parcels of land off of Elwood and Davis Streets and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-five introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement for sanitary sewer and stormwater drainage purposes from R and L Zeiss Family Partnership Three Limited on land on Euclid Avenue and declaring an emergency.
First reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-six introduced by Ben Gillik. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-two Budget Ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate two thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars into the park and recreation budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-six.
That concludes the legislation, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, we are now under other business. One of the items I'd like to raise on other business is regarding our next meeting and how that will be held. Um, we have discussed this in committee of the whole, um, but we will need to vote on whether we would like for this meeting to be uh, via Zoom or in person. That's Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, uh, the uh, city council meeting on May the second. Uh, I would propose that that be a Zoom meeting.
Thank you. There's a, is that a motion?
That is.
Okay. There's a motion for the May second, two thousand twenty-two uh, Tiffin City Council meeting to be held via Zoom. Is there a second? Uh, Councilman Perkins.
I'd like the second motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure I want to do it, but I was hoping someone would explain to the public since we're talking about a Zoom meeting, the first of May, the reasons for it.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to explain it. Um, I think that there's, there's been, there's been a number of council members due to various reasons, whether it's medical or work-related that are unable to attend in person the past few council meetings. And due to this and to ensure that we have quorum, um, and given the capability that we have via Zoom through the first of June, um, it is councils, um, council has proposed to um, to have the next meeting via Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, because many of us have expressed we would rather do it face-to-face and live and at city chambers. But thank you for that explanation.
Absolutely. Yes, it's definitely our desire to prefer in-person meetings. But uh, we we would like to ensure that we have, we have quorum and as many council members as possible. Uh, Councilman Gillik.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, being one of the council members unable to attend as much as as the citizens of Tiffin have certainly deserved. Why, why do we need to meet in person on the sixteenth? I'm, I feel like I'm out of loop, out of the loop on that one. Is that something I can discuss later on with someone?
Um.
Do you want me to answer that, ma'am?
Yes, yes.
Um, so as council requested some months ago, uh, the city of Tiffin uh, is getting outside legal counsel for the matter uh, revolving around the municipal court and the situation with the judge. Uh, and uh, or excuse me, the suspended uh, Mark Rep. Um, that will be an executive session on the sixteenth per council's request uh, with the attorney uh, that the city hired uh, on on, at your request to move forward uh, with that discussion. And we prefer it to be in person. Uh, it can be done over Zoom, but it's much more difficult uh, to have that conversation uh, on Zoom.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Yeah, yes, law director.
Yes, just to clarify that the the law currently allows for the Zoom electronic meetings through end of June. Not that you have to do that, but it allows it to do June thirtieth, not June first.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you correcting me. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, um, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on this motion.
Councilmember Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote of six to zero. Is there any other business for council, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a a fun side note, as we're doing another Zoom meeting, I keep noticing how my, when we do the pledge, my hand is looking like the wrong direction. I want to assure people, my heart is in the correct spot. It's just for some reason, my camera shows it opposite everybody else on the screen. So I didn't want to think I was different in other ways as we keep doing Zoom. So just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate the confirmation of that. Uh, Councilman Gillik.
Thank you, Madam President. If I may share just a brief story, uh, would like to express my appreciation to the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. Uh, unfortunately, I have had to take two rides via ambulance, uh, one in February and then another uh, just recently. And I've been very scared both times, but the care and professionalism I received has just been off the charts and I, and I'm so grateful. You know, I'll I'll share with you, my blood pressure was one eighty-eight over one twenty-two. And it got very scary, but you know, all the, all the good folks at the, at the fire station were able to, you know, reassure me that everything was going to be okay. And I just, I knew that I was in the hands of, of some outstanding professionals. Um, so I just wanted to, just wanted to comment on that, how grateful I am for for their care and support.
That's always great to hear and glad to have you, have you back. Um, any other business to come before council? Okay, seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
See you guys.